Alright, so I'm going to say the call to the Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence, please. Roll call for me?
Counselor Chamberlain?
President?
Counselor Heising?
Here.
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counselor Stickley?
Here.
Council President Steers?
Here.
Counselor Tiarina?
Here.
We have six members present in the form.
Thank you. Counsel, you have had time to go, we had an extra week even, to go over all of the minutes from our prior meetings.
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes as printed, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
All in favor? Oh, motion carries.
Yeah. Sorry.
Alright, moving on. We have a committee report from the Park Board.
That's me. It's kind of a long one.
Okay.
They didn't really have anything that they voted, they both voted on things. So anyhow, they're landscaping, laser, Dura Edge, and did it get started, Keith?
Yes.
So they're doing the diamonds, putting new clay in, shaping them. The city's paying for that. They're also leaving some clay here, so Matt and Hugo are being trained to groom the baseball diamonds better. There was a meeting Matt and Hugo actually came to Rotary because we have drainage problems at the baseball diamonds. Rotary has said they will work with that. Joe Howard, if anybody doesn't know him, his dad is Ted Howard, part of the Mall Brothers, and they have ditching equipment. So he volunteered his equipment and time this fall, or July, August, after the season's done, and they're going to put four-inch tile every 25 feet in the grass areas in the four north diamonds to see if that would help eliminate the water problems. And the gentleman was there from Dura Edge, which I don't remember his name.
Matt something.
Yeah. We all agreed that probably both would be better than what we got. But he's only going to do the four north ones first, and then we'll see how those work out before we do tear up and put, because they're going to have to settle and that. So the other thing on the, and the only thing Rotary said was that they just needed a price because they'll probably pick up the materials and that, they'll ask for volunteers. So for the ditching and the tiling, my thoughts is it's not going to cost the city any money for that project. Rotary did also vote to pay Funk Concrete, was a $5,000 bill for the additional concrete that Funk put in the ball dino area out there. And he's also going to bring in four loads of topsoil to shape it well, and that was $1,300, and Rotary volunteered to pay for that also. So that's our action. I don't know if we do, if we need a motion because...
Just on the tiling, the way it looks at the north fields.
We can vote on it, but it's pretty much going to be volunteers and paid for.
Right, but it's still going to be on our grounds, so just to say yes, thank you very much for being able to make that time and effort and process.
So that basically sums up, I do believe, the Park Board meeting, unless Keith can add something to that.
No, that's about it.
Okay. So I would, I would make the motion to move forward with the tiling of the four north diamonds.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the recommendation to tile the four north fields at Biddle Park moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Council President Steers. Any discussion?
It looks like to me, in reading the minutes, that this Joe Howard has some experience in tiling athletic fields. Did that come across at all?
He read up on it.
Okay.
But he does tile work, underground tile work.
They've done tiling for the last 50 years in Fulton County, fields and everything.
So the ball field is something new, but he's offering his equipment and his experience for digging and placing the tile in.
Yeah. Would you say, Harold, that he read up on it a little bit as far as how to treat an athletic plane surface?
They're, they're not going to touch the playing surface, just the outfield.
Well, that's part of the plane surface.
Yeah, but originally, they were talking about doing the whole thing, and then that's why we had a meeting with their edge to explain to them that if you tile underneath the red clay, it's not going to drain anyways. You have to have it sloped so it gets to the grass, and then it will drain from the grassy areas. So they've got a game plan set so that the Dura Edge will drain towards the outfield, and then the tile will be able to take it away from there.
Joe said he read up and looked into other ball fields and baseball fields for pro baseball and that, of how they tile it, and to get rid of the water in the grass area.
That explanation helped me to understand the point of the clay part, so thank you.
Yeah, the clay don't drain.
He's putting in the tile, and that is...
I'm just glad it's reflected in the minutes. It sounds like Joe has maybe researched the specific tiling of an athletic surface, which is nice.
Of ball diamonds, yes.
And Dura Edge is the ones that are helping him to make sure that the grade is correct and everything.
Yeah, they're the ones that originally put on the field, and then they're, they're going to bring it back to the original specs.
Alright, so teamwork.
Is this the first time it's been lasered?
Yes.
And how long will that last?
He said usually three to five years, but with good maintenance on it, we can extend that a little bit further. Because it doesn't drain, if you get a, if you don't keep that grade and get a little pocket, then you get water sitting there, you scoop the water away, guess what, you're pushing, making a bigger hole, then you make a bigger hole, so you've got to keep filling that in so that we keep the grade.
So they said they was going to train Matt and Hugo on how to groom and maintain the ball diamond better, and leave product there, so if it does have a hole, they can fill it in and groom that in so we don't have water pockets on the diamonds where the clay is.
Is there like a whole team that they're going to train, or just Matt and?
Matt and Hugo.
Just those two?
They're the only ones that's going to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. If we have, if they for whatever reason leave, I don't want to lose that knowledge.
They're probably, if that's a fact, then you've got to train the next person coming in.
The next person, okay.
Like the other job.
There are only two full-time people working for the rec department, so.
Okay.
The other ones are all part-time, so it doesn't...
Makes sense to do that.
They can, they can train the other ones on how to do it.
Right, okay.
You know, the north end right now, Biddle Park is partially owned by the city and then partially owned still by the Rotary. I would encourage the Rotary to go ahead and tile their, their portion while Joe Howard is out there doing our portion, just go ahead and tile that. I know they're being very generous here. I understand that, but while they're there, while they're there, just go and finish the entire.
I don't think it's landscaped, Joe.
That's final grade out there.
Because all the diamonds are shaped and ready to go.
No, they're not shaped, but they're, they're out there.
So just like Joe and this gentleman from Dura Edge said, you need blueprints of where everything's going to be before you start just sticking tile in. Because if you stick tile in just anywhere, you could end up with a fence post right through it, you know what I mean? So the best thing to do is make sure that the diamonds are laid out so you know this is where the diamonds are going to be in the north.
And you never know, maybe he'll come back and do that.
And then before we seed it and everything, get it tiled first. I agree with you.
Right now, you know, we know where the fields are going to be at those, at the Rotary-owned portion, we know where the fields are going to be. I think now would be a great time to go ahead and tile those. They're being very generous. The Wasean Rotary is being very generous to tile our portion, you know, that we own. I would just give them a gentle nudge also to finish up the site that they still own too, so.
They started that project.
They did.
So they don't, they don't want to lose it, and they don't want to leave the city with the bag, you might want to say. They want to help out. And that's why they even paid for the Funk Concrete out there, $5,000, and the $1,300 for blacker. And then the gentleman from Funk Concrete, I don't know his name.
Matt.
Matt. He volunteered his time in Skidlotter to actually shape and work on it out there too, so.
Right.
There's a lot of people that's volunteering and doing things pretty reasonable, and the Rotary's standing behind to help out the city to maintain the great, the great place of Biddle Park that it can become, and it is. So.
Yep.
So there's a motion on the floor, Mayor.
Alright, Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six A zero Nays, motion carries.
Ready. That's it, well, as far as the committee reports, so we'll move on to department head reports. And Chief Sluter is not here.
Everything's going well on our end. Still working daily to recruit part-time and volunteers, and we're all starting to enjoy the summer in the warm weather.
And 4th of July is just around the corner.
And 4th of July is around the corner.
You ready for it?
Yep, absolutely.
Have you heard any fine accounts on the Firecracker 5K?
I have not.
Okay. And Chief Sluter's surgery is?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. He's getting a knee replacement.
How's he doing?
He's just, he's doing great tonight. Tomorrow, that's the worst.
Forty-eight hours.
But then, I thought he had it done last week, and he comes bebopping into staff meeting, and I'm like, "Did you have your surgery?" He goes, "Yup, I had it yesterday." He's just walking, I'm like...
So his chopping block is tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Oh.
Yeah, so, okay. Any questions for Assistant Chief? Okay. Chief Chitindu?
We did receive one of our Durigos in from Terry Hendrix, who had orders. The second one is done, it's just still a shipment to get here. So we'll have that relatively soon, but now we'll be waiting on other parts to be able to get them all fitted and road-ready. Watch guard, our camera system, last I heard was maybe September for the camera system to come in. Hopefully that can get pumped up sooner than that, but we'll be waiting. And that's the other thing that is scarce right now are brackets that hold the light bar on top of the car, so. Once we're able to get all the parts in, we'll, we'll get them road-ready, but we do at least have one of the two vehicles with the other one en route.
Is it lettered already, Jim?
Was that?
Is it lettered?
No. I've contacted them, they're just kind of waiting.
That seemed like it took us a long time last time, didn't it?
The lettering doesn't take very long. They can come down and can do it in a day, but let's say it's the actual building and the equipment of making sure we get all of the pieces that go into them.
Who's the lucky officer for that one? Have you decided yet?
I'm not even sure which, which car assignments we're at, so.
Alright. Any questions for Chief?
Chief, were you able to trickle down that information about a presence at the pool on busy days?
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Keith?
Just in case you didn't realize it, Wasean is, I'm sorry, Jamie. We are on the Yellowstone Automotive Trail, historic trail. This was brought to me by Bill Drummer from the Chamber. We are going to be placing signs up, they've ordered them on this. The Yellowstone Trail goes from Plymouth Road, Massachusetts, right by Plymouth Rock, all the way to Puget Sound. So this is, they want, they're big and pushing it because there's a lot of people, have you heard Route 66, that come to travel.
This is a northern one.
This, this organization will advertise the different places in town that we have, the different things we have to offer, so it's good for tourism, and hopefully it will be bringing people in. But I wanted to show that to you so that you knew what it was about when you see them get put up, because he said he ordered them today, but they may be here in 2026, we're not sure.
How many are there?
There will be one on each end of State Route 2, and then we'll also have directional arrows to point people down on each crossing, pointing them where to go.
Nice.
So. We've, our South Brunel Street project is still on track to be started here in the next week or two, and that should be done by the end of summer. We've had some issues down at Rear Park at the restroom, and we're working with the police department on to catch the people that are decorating the interior of the bathrooms down there.
And plugging the toilets.
Yes, and causing literally thousands of dollars worth of damage for the city, so we're hoping to catch the vandals before we're going to end up having to lock them up and put porta-potties out there for people, because that's a shame that we can't have nice things without someone wanting to break them.
Yeah.
Exactly, every year, it just seems like...
Yeah, and it's, it's getting worse, it's, so. We are hoping that we catch them, and if we do, we will be prosecuting them, so.
Wow.
Pick up pickleball.
We are, the pickleball courts are done, all three of them have been stripped out, and they are being utilized. Hopefully the lights will, before fall gets here, we'll have the lights up so people can also use them in the fall, and possibly even in the winter if they're really hard pickleball fans. And from what I've gathered, it's been the positive comments from everyone that has utilized them, because they do like playing, it's outdoors, but the sun is not beating down on them. And I think that's all I've got, unless...
Well, I stopped out there, there was a group of ladies playing, and I just stopped and asked them what they thought. The only thing they would like to see is some sort of netting, because if they hit it and the person doesn't return it, it goes out into the park.
That's...
And they, and I said, "I don't know," that, and something to divide the courts a little bit.
We are looking, Steve, to put fencing on the one side so people can still sit under the pavilion outside the court areas, and, kind of like tennis courts.
Yeah.
At some point in time, get that, that fenced in, but we wanted to see one if it's...
That's what I told them, we wanted to see if it's going to take off, but it seems to be busy. I'm out there, I see them over there.
Do you hear the little doink?
Yes.
It's a doink.
Doink, isn't it?
I could actually make this sound, but not going to show my talents.
I had another question, not pertaining to pickleball. I was in Cincinnati this weekend, and I got a text from my neighbor that there was a water break in our neighborhood on Lawrence Avenue, I believe. And she texted me, "Should I boil water? I don't know." And I said, "I don't know," and she didn't know if the protocol was that they notify the people in the area or...
No, they all, we've talked with, I've talked with John Arps on this, that the way the city does it, we do not depressurize the system until we've got the hole excavated to keep any contaminants out of it. So at no point, unless there's a major break where we lose pressure, you're not going to need to boil.
Okay.
Because we, we keep it out, and then we take test samples to make sure that there's no issue. But we are looking at getting like door hangers, just letting people know that, hey, there was a water break, but it's okay, you don't need to boil. Very seldom do we have a problem where we have to have a boil advisory, because that means that we've lost water pressure throughout, not just that area, but a good chunk of the city, before we would have to have a problem.
I just don't want to ask it to me and find out what the protocol was and let them know, but...
Yeah, that's, but we, we keep the system pressurized, even though we're still losing water, but just for that reason, because we don't want contaminants to get back into the system.
Good, thanks. Was there an issue out on Oak, right down the road, where they were carving up the road?
Gas line.
Gas line?
Yeah, that was Ohio Gas, I believe, putting it in a gas line. I don't know if they were putting it in for...
I think Cave, oh, yeah.
I don't know if it was for Cave, or if it was Kaufman Door.
They're going to charge the neighbors and that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, but that's, that's why it was tore up there, putting in the gas line, and I didn't check yet, but I thought they were going to have it paved today, depending on the weather.
It is.
Yeah.
Is it?
I think it got done.
Yeah, because it was a bore cross.
Yeah.
Yeah, I called on that one, too.
Nice, okay.
Good job, Cave, look at you. I thought you were bringing up like a trifold presentation or something, and you pulled that sign up. I was really impressed.
So from Plymouth Rock, it goes to where?
Puget Sound.
Washington.
State of Washington, out there, yeah? Okay.
I, I kind of followed it on, on the internet, and a lot of cities, and actually, my niece lives in one of them, in Wisconsin, have a huge sign, they have events, and people travel it, just like they did 66, so it's kind of neat to be able to know that we're part of that. And it's been there for many years.
That's crazy.
Yeah. So, okay, that's it for Keith, let's move on to Jamie's report.
I don't have a lot to report today. I provided you the income tax figures for the end of May, we're still up here to date, almost 13%. I, I did, at the staff meeting, mentioned that I do need to hold a finance committee meeting, and I do need a utility committee meeting, so if we can look at getting those scheduled in the near future, I appreciate it. But that's all I have. Any questions for Jamie? Okay, Tom?
I don't really have much to report, Keith is keeping me super busy on some real estate projects that are challenging, but we'll report on those as time goes on. I can report not to the financial aspect, but as to the number of runners at the Firecracker 5K, that I think they had in excess of 90, which was really good considering it was threatening rain the whole day, and we were fortunate that it stopped right before the race started.
It depends on how you really look at it. I had a prime course.
Oh. Tim Dennis did pray Rotary that it would rain cats and dogs in 505, so everyone else would leave and he could win. Suffice it to say that neither of those happened, but it was, yeah, the trails were in great shape, I think Ed and Offsinger had gotten out and groomed them a bit before the race, and I had really good things from a lot of the runners and walkers about the condition of the trail, so.
Right.
But it was, I think, I was not at the finish line, but it sounded like everything went well, and a good time at Sullivan's.
Didn't Hannah take her category?
Yep.
Their new administrative assistant for Chief Sluter, she's a runner, and she come in and took her...
How'd you do, Mayor?
I don't know, I was in Texas. I did great.
Where'd you play at?
In Texas, Austin, Texas. I took a wrong turn.
Is the real estate thing the street thing you're dealing with?
Yeah, that's one thing that we did deal with, I think we're making some progress on that.
Yeah.
Still working on that, yeah. The other, I mean, we're working on the dedication of the easement for the, and the privately-owned sanitary sewer out there in the Ace Plaza, working with all the different owners to get that taken care of. It's actually privately-owned right now, and I think everybody wants to dedicate it to the city, and it's just a real estate quagmire out there that we're trying to work through. And a couple other things, but yeah, we're working on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions, any other questions? Great. Alright, let's move on to legislation. First reading on Resolution 2022-14 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the 2022 Molly Valley East Chip Consortium partnership agreement between the County of Henry, City of Napoleon, County of Fulton, and the City of Wasean, and we need to declare this one as emergency.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-14 on a ready-to-read by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six A zero Nays, motion carries.
Final passage?
Second.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-14 on final reading, passed, moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counsel, Council President Steers. Any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel, Council President Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Six A zero Nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We have nothing under second reading of legislation, but under third reading, and hopefully final here, Resolution 2022-10 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements for the engineering services.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to place Resolution 2022-10 on third reading, moved by Counselor Tiarina and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any discussion? Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yeah.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six A zero Nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Under new business, I need a motion to accept the appointment to the various boards and commissions, and this would be the revolving loan fund committee, and putting Gina Roseman on, and she would be the business person on that board. Each one has, like we have, some of that's in the banking, someone in the business, private sector, and citizen, and...
Who's that mayor you're putting on?
Gina Roseman, from Touch and Magnolia.
Gina?
Mm-hmm.
I'd make a motion to appoint Gina.
I'll second. You want it?
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Motion to accept the mayor's appointments to the various boards and commissions, moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. Any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Six A zero Nays, motion carries.
I will say, under new business, since I've been mayor, I have had three people at large who have wanted to step up and be on a board, and that's never happened before, so I think the tide's changing, and it's kind of nice to have people who want to volunteer their time, so I might have another one coming next month, and hopefully that'll be, everything will be cool.
Oh, great, Gina Roseman.
Anything else under new business?
Sorry, Harold.
Okay, old business?
I've got, oh, I'm...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So I met with Troy Armstrong two weeks ago, I think, or maybe a week ago, and just kind of talked about how we can kind of re-bridge the gap between the school and council with negative feelings and things like that, and so I actually had Corinne reach out to Ms. Manns and see if we can kind of get him on the agenda to come out and talk with us.
Do you want him on here, or committee level?
My dinner.
My dinner.
Yeah. That way it's filmed and people can watch it.